Good evening. This is Tuesday, September, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded. And some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. That ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. For all members. Access. This is Tom Sampin, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear. Me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Thank you. Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
Tommy, Tom Sampin here. We'll do anticipated speakers when they pop up on the agenda. With a quorum of the board at present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-nine P M. Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Due to the current state emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific, specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. And allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. Meeting ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will invite each board member. By name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or emotions. Please hold all your insights to your name as called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yielded the floor, state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. We are official.
All right.
So Jay is doing the mail, so I can't tell you whether we have any mail to.
Right, well, I texted him and asked him if he was coming, and he said yes.
Okay.
So. It, I don't know if you can skip around or.
Um, well, the only thing we had, I guess, um, is Emily in the audience?
She is.
Yes, okay, so she's on the agenda for seven forty-five, which is fairly close to now, so can you promote her, please?
And, and Carrie's there too, so bring Carrie up.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Carrie afterwards would like to talk about the Center Village Forum.
Okay.
All right, there we go.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Doing well? How's everyone?
Hi, Emily.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely ready to start.
Okay, can you?
Yeah, do that.
Excellent.
Unless Carrie wanted to go first, I.
No, make her wait.
She's got an earlier bedtime than me, so I was trying to be nice.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, so just a quick. Update and then hoping to get some input as we're planning for the public forum on housing for Tuesday, October eleventh. Um. So I'm going to send out, well, here, I'll share my screen to show you just the final draft of the promotional flyer. And then I'm going to send that out probably this evening or tomorrow morning, um, so we can get promoting this. There were a few edits from it last time, but I think it looks pretty good now. Um, I added in Berlin to this, so it's very clear that it's focused on the town. Um, I made it a little bolder at the bottom that. Participation in this will be contributing to the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan Housing Chapter Update. And when you scan the Q R code, I added a few more details about what people can expect when they attend remotely.
Excellent. Do you, um, are you able to share this on the, on Berlin Neighbors Connect? On Facebook?
I'll have to share it with someone that can be on, that is on that page.
Okay, yeah, so send it to me and I'll share it.
Perfect.
Um, but it has to be. Facebook's stupid. Um, it can't be a PDF. It has to be like a J P E G. Um, or, uh, what, or GIF.
Um, yeah.
Uh, awesome. That'd be great.
Yeah, I'll send it in a PDF and like a J P E G form, some image form.
Were you able to get confirmation from the owner of the, of that to pin it at the top of the page?
Um, for Berlin Neighbors Connect?
Yes.
I'll, um, I, I mean, it's Peter Hoffman.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, uh, I'll just text him or email him or something and ask him to pin it.
Perfect.
And I can print out some of these and kind of go to different spots in Berlin. Um. Like the library, Town Hall, um.
Emily, if you get them to me, I can take them around. That saves you any time.
Oh, sure, yeah. Um, yeah, I'll let you know when I have them printed and can head over.
Yep.
I can take them to Emily.
Oh, thanks, Carrie.
Or take them to Tim.
Yeah.
That's even better.
Yeah, seriously.
This is getting easier all the time.
We're here for you.
Excellent. That looks great.
If, if I.
So we'll try to get someone out.
If, if I want to participate remotely and I don't understand. These little Q R code things. What do I, or I don't have a cellphone? What do I do? Is there, is, do we have a link for somebody to go to some other option?
Yeah, I could add the link in here, um, just like at the bottom, maybe.
Eloise is in the audience and, and I'm saying this on her behalf.
Right. Also, um, we can, because we have to post it as a meeting.
Right.
So we can put the link in the posting on my town government.
Yep.
Um.
Good.
Yep. So do we have?
That's a regular planning board meeting, right? That's a regular Tuesday night for us.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Carolyn.
Yes, dear.
Have you, have you done a hybrid meeting up there with, with your Turners?
We have not from the eighteen seventy Town Hall. Coffee Talk was a hybrid meeting from the town offices last week.
Right.
Um. No, before the eleventh, we should get in there and test how we're gonna do it.
So I'll go up with you whenever you want.
Okay.
And we, maybe we can get Evy to come over too, because she. Well, you may be familiar with some of the equipment that's in there, because there's a lot of equipment, right?
Right, yeah. Glenn's definitely familiar with it.
Yeah, okay, good, so.
So, yeah, so we'll do it on a weekend.
Yep. Let me know, let me know when.
Okay.
Um. Because I, I'll go with you and Will. I, you know, I can get in the building and stuff, so.
Right.
Yeah, if there's any equipment that I need to bring, just let me know if I need to bring like a projector or a screen or cables or anything.
I think we've got everything.
Right, there's definitely screens, um.
I've got a projector. That I used for our program. There's lots of cables, there's lots of mics.
Right, it.
And. And Abby's got some stuff too from Nineteen Carter that. Might be available as well.
Right, and there's definitely stuff there from the Woodturning Club that Glenn knows how to use. I don't know how to use it. Um. Do we need, someone needs to bring a laptop, though.
Yeah, I'll bring a laptop.
Okay.
Or a couple laptops.
Yeah.
Thinking.
I think we have everything but microphones, right, Emily?
Yeah.
And Abby's got some good mics, so she's got three.
Right, and I think there, there's at least one or two in the woodturning closet as well.
And then they have some table mics that sort of pick up multiple. That's an option too, I guess.
Oh, we have the owl.
You, you're gonna bring your owl?
I think the owl is meant for a situation like that, right? Emily, so we used it for the annual meeting.
Yeah, you can travel, huh?
Yeah, it has a case and everything. We've used it a couple times.
Wow.
I'm assuming we're not talking a bird of prey.
We use it at the commission meetings and it allows. A great deal of flexibility. We. Because with the commission, what we did is we, we had a screen with, um. Well, remote participants, so they could be featured. And then the, the owl was there picking up what was going on in the room. Um, so people that were at home could pick up from that. So it works pretty well.
All right, and you guys know how to set that up?
Yeah.
Carrie knows all that stuff.
Yeah.
This is why I'm bringing people to support me.
Yeah, right?
Teamwork.
Yeah, seriously. Cool. I think we're in good shape then, as long as we can get some folks to register and show up.
Excellent.
So what, what, what is our sense? What, anybody got any ideas about what they think the participation will be like?
It totally depends. At Spencer, we had like around ten people. In Princeton, we had thirty.
Wow.
Somewhere in that range. Do you usually get a good turnout for, for events like this or town meeting?
Um. Town meetings with hot topics can draw, but lately town meetings have been drawing only around a hundred.
Hmm.
Right. Is quite a ways down from where they used to be. Even on, on a slow year, um.
Yeah, when we did the one like this for conservation, when we were doing the, um, open space plan, I think three people showed up. But it wasn't available on Zoom, so.
Right.
And I believe it was a winter night and, you know, but.
I, I think you're right. I mean, there may be, there may be fifteen to twenty people that show up in person, and there may be another fifteen or twenty that participate remotely, so.
Are you serving refreshments?
Late refreshments.
A lot of people come.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can. What do you want?
I've got some chips and sodas to bring.
And I can go to BJ's and get cookies or something.
Yeah, cookies or brownies or. Something.
Yeah.
Thanks to apples, grapes, something like that.
That's what, apples, apples.
Yeah.
Should buy them from somebody that is selling them in town.
I was gonna say, where can we get apple?
Tim, do you know anyone?
Well, we're selling five varieties right now from Jerry's, so I can, I can bring on five, you know, sampling of five of his varieties and say. Here we go, so.
That would be awesome.
Who knows, there may be raspberries still in too. One on the cob.
There you go. That, that, that's a perfect kind of meeting food.
Um. So I can set up chairs.
Yep.
We just have to, we have to leave it like we found it, which is basically empty, so. Um, do you want tables, Emily?
Yeah, that, I would say like maybe like three tables or something, um, because we'll have like a breakout activity with these big maps on them.
Right.
Um, so at least three tables, I would say.
Right, so there's small, there's card tables, there's small banquet tables and big banquet tables.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll probably just bring out four of the big banquet tables, and then people have really got room.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, then they can move their own chairs to the table.
Perfect.
What, four tables? All right.
Okay, and then, um. I have one more thing, if we have some time, um, just to go over. Uh, what the activity is going to look like, so, um. Like, like I said, we're gonna have like a, a big map of the town to look at, and ideally, we're gonna have, like I mentioned at the last meeting, a few study areas. Of places in town where future housing could go. Um, so I was wondering if there, folks had any more thoughts on the proposed study areas we should show on the map, um, to kind of help generate discussion? Um. I can share, see if this works. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so this, I was reading over the two thousand and thirteen master plan, and this is in the housing chapter. I really, really liked this map. I'm hoping it could like somehow replicate this, um, where it says, so it goes through and it's, it's a little hard to read. Um, but it says the suitability for residential or small scale commercial. Uh, um, I'm sure most of you are familiar with this map, but, uh, I really, really liked it. Um, these areas in red said they're most suited, it's town on land that's most suitable for housing, uh, conservation or other municipal purposes. And then it had these circles around, um, existing or planned subsidized housing.
Right.
I was hoping to kind of work with something like this, and then so we could show, uh. Folks that attend the forum, areas that could be suitable for housing, and then put, maybe put circles like this around the areas. And so we'll have like examples of, uh, like condos or accessory dwelling units, and people can say, oh, I think, um, this type of housing would look good here. It would be suitable. It's in a walkable area, uh, it's close to schools, something like that, really to help generate those discussions.
It's interesting.
This was, yeah, this was two thousand and thirteen?
I think so, yeah.
So three got built, four got built.
Two got built.
One was built already, two got built, five got built. I mean, five maybe, I think one, two, and five may have already been. There to a degree, I, but.
Away, yeah.
Hmm. Yep, yep, yep.
Can you scroll up just a tad, Emily? Uh, sorry, down.
I was down.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, so what did you say? You want, you want to identify some hotspots then, right?
Yeah, some just general areas. It could even be if there's like a, like an overlay district or something that could be an area. Um.
You know, we talked about River Run.
Yep.
And we talked about. Tollmans. And, you know, we wonder about the center in general.
Yeah, any idea about these town owned lots, the, the red ones? There's this big one up here in the. Far corner.
So that. So the one on Baker. There's, there were three lots that we took in tax title we thought might be combined for a single family, you know. Habitat for Humanity, something like that, you know, maybe down the road with some of the money from CPA. The, the big, the big piece off of. Where the hell is that? Is that the end of Allen Road?
Well, Blade, that's, well, so at, at the end of Allen Road is now all conservation land.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't compute, does it?
No, it doesn't, um. And in any event, it would be, I mean, it would be completely isolated by, uh, conservation land at this point, so I don't. I don't think we should have that one on the, uh, agenda.
No, it's single, so. Oh, near Eloise's house. Um, on Lancaster Road. That other small red. That was a piece that. Maybe through tax title is owned by the town and I think there was some thought there about maybe a, a single unit.
I'm not seeing that. I see a, a parcel on Allen Road, but.
Is that on Allen too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that where, well, remember when Arthur came in, Tom, and?
Yes.
Was that that?
He was that, yeah, that was around Allen Road.
I, yeah, that. I don't remember anything about that parcel, but if it is. I think it would be, it would be similar to what Tim just said about the Baker Road.
Right.
Property, yeah.
The, the Baker Road piece, I'm fairly certain got taken in tax title.
You're right.
Right.
So, you know, we've got that language on the, in the zone and bylaw that allows for the creation of a multi-family dwelling. In a residential agricultural zone, if the. The structure looks like a single family home and has, I don't know, does it say all the units have to be affordable or something like that? No one's ever used it. That was the piece that we wrote for Arthur.
Correct.
Yeah.
He was looking for a four unit.
Right.
Four unit building that made his, um, his, um, land cost, not land costs, but his, um, utility costs were.
And that's still on the book, so it, it's, it's pieces like, you know, that, that sometimes somebody may try to utilize. Hmm.
I mean, would there be appetite for a full unit dwelling?
Well, I wonder about that at Tollman's.
Yeah.
I mean, you could make it, but an attached. Multi-family dwelling that. You know, look like a house with a barn or something like that, you know, I mean.
The one that he proposed looked like a, um.
Victorian, didn't it?
It, it was Victorian or Second Empire or whatever, so it had like a central door, two units to the side, and then two units behind that was access from the rear.
Right, yeah.
And they were up and down units, so each unit had a second story to it.
Yep. Huh.
So.
I'm having a hard time. Picture, oh, is that behind, the one in the center, is that behind the school?
Number one?
No.
Oh, the red?
Yeah.
It says town offices, I think.
Yeah, is that what it says?
Yeah.
So there's a spot out behind the town offices, right? There's some land out there.
Wet, though.
Yeah, it's very wet.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, I mean, that's, isn't that basically just the parking lot for the town offices?
No, there's a parcel out behind Thomas, because we, when we, I, I recall when we were doing the. The, that building, there was some, um, we were looking for some, some, uh, upland, and it was too wet. There was nothing out there, but we were looking for some tanks out there or something.
Got you, got you. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I was sorry. I was oriented wrong. Yep, I got it, um. Yeah, and it, it, it doesn't extend beyond, uh, in the back of the old fire station.
Correct.
Yep, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, I, I was, um. I was picturing it, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah.
You're saying there's a house lot back there?
There's, is, I, it's not a single family. It's part of the whole school parcel. There was never some divided out.
Right.
But there was some up, there's some upland that runs towards the, um, the old firehouse that's on, um, Central. Um, and then there was some land out behind where the, the back, uh, fire department, uh, building is, because we.
Right.
As I said, we were looking for some areas to put some tanks, but it just wouldn't work. It was too wet.
Right.
Yeah.
When we put a circle around the center of town. Without specifying exactly where a site would be. Because there's land that might come up for sale at some point. Used for housing. Even though it's not available now.
Well, if you put a circle big enough and include the Tolman pot, possible.
Yeah, definitely do that.
That, that read on. Is. What am I, is that Highland? Is that the cemetery?
Either that or it's Great Oak.
It looks like the cemetery.
Isn't the cemetery right on the Bolton Line?
No.
Or is it?
Grace.
A little bit.
Grace's house is before.
No, so Emily, um, up north, north.
Yeah.
Um, see where it says Highland Street, and there's that red parcel? Yeah.
So what are these reds supposed to indicate?
Town owned land.
Oh.
Oh, so that probably is the cemetery.
So that's town owned land, and the school is a town only, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the town offices, so. Okay. That makes sense.
Yep.
What about down in the southern part of the town?
So River Run. If you look at the River Road coming off of the Rotary. And you see the, the yellow rectangle that's just above the circle for three.
Yep.
Yep. Right beyond the, the yell, the orange rectangle is River Run, where Boundless Adventures is, and that's the piece that the town has the option to buy. For a buck. Um, that may be a suitable piece to consider for.
I'd throw, I'd throw the, uh, the parcel that's on, um, River Road too, that's the sand pit, because there's been a couple of attempts to put some housing in there. And so it might be interesting to see what people's feedback or appetite is for what kind of zoning, what kind of housing, you know, if it's a senior housing or whatever.
Yeah, and whether they'd be inclined to rezone it so it could accept housing.
Right.
Um, where is that?
So if you, if you put your cursor just up a little bit above the, yep, so. Not, not that high, because it's still going to be on River Road. River Road is running through all that hash mark.
Right, yeah, what is that big gray chunk right there?
Well, that's zone limited business.
Oh, right, so, and that's where the gravel pit is.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, part of it.
Yep.
And Grace said it's unsuitable for residential use.
Well, because, because it's limited business.
Because we got it zoned that way, but it doesn't mean it, it couldn't be unzoned.
Right.
Rezoned. So draw a circle essentially to the northeast of three. That's just slightly smaller than three and you'll end up with a coverage of that area.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And, and what's the hash marks? What, on the legend? Land constraints. Any idea what you meant by that? Oh, slope, I see.
Huh.
Hmm.
Hmm.
That's when there was still flat land available in Berlin, apparently.
How about the old Sears property at the mall?
Sure. That's, that's the gray chunk.
Great, yep.
So.
Number three needs to be big.
Right.
Yeah. Um, that report that Marlboro put together said that in, in a high percentage, it was like 30% of the, of the, uh, malls that had been built, you know, in the eighties, nineties. When they're converted, about 30% or so include housing.
Yeah.
Which I thought was interesting. So yeah, circle, a circle over all of Solomon Pond, what the hell?
Right.
Yeah, I, I could probably look up some examples of like malls or stores that have been converted into housing, just to give people an idea.
Yeah, because we're, we're faced with that dilemma certainly, and it'd be interesting because we're talking about how to reevaluate the possible uses for the, the mall site and what we should be willing to discuss with the present owners and getting some feedback from folks as to their appetite for housing at that site would be interesting.
Yeah, definitely.
Just sent you the Marlboro study, Emily.
Oh, thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three. I mean, those, those seem to be the places that we'd be most interested in hearing from people.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is perfect. This is exactly what I was looking for to get out of this meeting. So, um, I'll put together an awesome looking map that will be used for the activity. And just a reminder that we'll, we'll have like an online version of the activity as well um, for our remote participants. So, um, I think I'd showed an example, um, at the last meeting of what that would look like. And for folks who maybe couldn't attend at all, whether remote or in person, um, we could also leave the, the like survey activity, um, open for a few weeks for people to take.
And you leave the door open for people to say you've identified three or four possible areas, but you know, I'd, I'd suggest such and such a spot that you haven't even considered. So, right, so.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I, and I think coming out of the meeting, um, we ought to, you know, impress upon people that this is going to be continued discussions by the planning board out throughout the year, culminating with perhaps rezoning some parcels in the spring for Springtown meeting. So that people will realize this is not a one and done discussion. It's going to be multiple faceted and, you know, multiple discussions.
Eloise has her hand up.
Can you promote Eloise, please?
Absolutely.
Greetings. I would strongly suggest that you. Can I talk?
You may.
Thank you. I suggest that you contact the treasurer or tax collector and find out if there are any new additions since this is 10 years old.
Yeah, new additions to town owned land.
Tax title.
Tax title, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, Carolyn, is there still, is there a piece on Marlboro?
No.
That, where Dudley leaves that was tax title?
Uh, it wa, I don't know that it ever went through. But, um, that piece just recently sold as a buildable lot. Remember they came in
Yep.
some months ago and did some swapping to get the frontage.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
How do, do we want to entertain, um, the parcel, the flat pad that's at, um, next to BJ's? In Highland, we talked about maybe a, some housing there at one time, or maybe even a hotel.
Huh.
Yeah. Where is that?
The flat pad that's up near BJ's.
Oh.
You know, in front of BJ's.
You know, where, where, where the killdeer live.
Yeah.
Just to get a sense of whether people are willing to entertain other things up there or not.
Well, mixed uses, I mean, that, that's where we're heading, so.
Exactly.
Right.
Why not think about instead of, I mean, the trouble with the hotel is the height.
Correct.
Um, and the thing about housing that you're talking about is that you, you probably wouldn't be four stories high and shining in Carolyn's bedroom, you know, so.
Oh, Cabela's will block it. Don't worry.
We had a second story on top of Cabela's.
Right.
Small pad, isn't it?
I was gonna say, is it small enough that Benderson would entertain any kind of residential there?
It's, um, it's fairly decent size. You know, and they have the infrastructure there, the water and sewer are already there.
I mean, the, the, the structure's aimed at like 30,000 to 40,000 square feet. So there's got to be.
Right.
And you know, that's what's happening. You, you look at what, what MDC communities Carrie and Emily will know how to, I mean, they're talking about five, you know, 10 to 20 units per acre, right?
Oh, MBTA communities?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Emily's got all the updates on those.
I mean, I, it scares you, but.
Twenty units in an acre is a lot. That's pretty dense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's what's going, I mean, you know, it could be apartments, it could be.
It could be, and I mean, Benderson may not even be interested. They may just want to keep it retail, but you know, it would give us an idea of what people think.
Well, we rezoned it, what, 14, what, 10 years ago, whatever, so. Um, you, you know, if their appetite is to go another 10 years with nothing happening on the parcel, that's true, but they, they may get desperate and say, we just as soon finish this off and be done with it.
Be done with it.
What about the Mo's property that you've been talking to the new owners about?
Yeah, we could see what people thought about that.
That would definitely require rezoning, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, eh, but the buildable par, partial, uh, what am I trying to say? The amount of land there that's buildable because of the conservation restriction.
Is limited.
It definitely would limit it to like one, four, four unit max.
Well, you might be able to do what we, we, you know, that drew up for Arthur.
Which lot is that up that you're talking about? Sorry.
It's on Route 62.
So you see where 495 comes off and Route 62 heads west. There's that green. It's, it, it, right. Nope, too far up. It's, um, yeah, see, you, you can't see where I'm pointing. So west of 495 nor, on the north side of uh, 62, that green that's right there.
The green is out behind, isn't it?
Yeah.
But the green is, I mean, really the buildable part is that little teeny itsy bitsy piece in between the stream that's there and the grain.
Right.
Cause the green is on the east portion of the lot.
Now, the green is the back in the east. All the back is green.
Is the land that's for sale up there absolutely unbeatable, unbuildable?
Is small. It's.
Behind the kennel?
Five acres.
Right, that, that high spot right there, again, so right in between those two pieces of green, that yellow. The, the hash marks are the hill that goes straight up and then that yellow before you hit the stream. Um, is really the only buildable spot up there.
It was a sizable piece of property, but it's just not, all of it's not buildable.
Yeah, it's, it's so much of it's wet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Plus you need a pretty good road to get in there too. You'd have to hack a lot of that hill, hill down.
Yep.
And if you want to put 10 to 20 units per acre, who knows, we put a bunch of units in.
Well, the only.
We don't want to put that much in.
10 to 20 acres works when you have the infrastructure to support it. You're not going to get 10 to 20 acres on a, 10 to 20 units on an acre with wells and septic. It's just not going to happen.
No, I mean, that's the benefit of Benderson's site, you know, they've got.
Correct. Over by Sears.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. And messing around on River Road near, um, River Bridge. I mean, you can tap in and River Run could possibly tap into Senny's operation in terms of water and septic, so.
As long as you paid the, paid the fee, I'm sure he would be happy.
Yeah.
Right.
Which brings up another available spot we discussed, which is the remaining available lots inside River Bridge in front of the apartments.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that on the list, because I'd like to see that. One of our goals this year is to finish open projects, and that's one.
Yep.
No, I agree. I agree. And I think they want to do something. And right now, the whole place looks unfinished. Never mind on our docket, it's unfinished.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, but the amount of density that they wanted.
They, they, the problem is, the problem is that we've got to overcome the negative feelings that people have about granting them housing in that spot when they were promised retail. And the, the fact that they've not fulfilled a lot of their commitments uh, over the years or have asked for relief from some of their commitments and things like that. People are angry and they're just going to be punitive until they.
Sure, but, but the proposal they came that they had for that was like 40 units or 30, I mean, the, the density, you know, half that maybe. Half of that would be hard for people to swallow, 20 units on that piece. Um, you know, so it, they're certainly, what you say is certainly accurate, but that wasn't the only reason.
No.
Right.
But see, from my standpoint on that piece is that we agree that there would be a certain amount of uh, housing units and a certain amount of retail and a certain amount of, you know, commercial space in ter, in terms of restaurants and, and things like that. And we've got over the amount of, you know, residential spaces. Um, yeah, we got a little bit of retail for the gas station. We have a hotel. A little bit of retail where he's got that little small, um, convenience center, um, and the daycare. And, and, you know, to, to jam housing on the rest of it is an opportunity lost. I think.
So I, I now, I think we can conclude it's not a good real retail site, you know, some, some places are.
Oh, oh, here, here, here. Who? We, I think we're drifting away from our topic here.
Right.
I think we need to get back to Emily's goal here.
Actually, if I may, what I was going to say was if we were going to deal with this, uh, we should have somebody leading the work group on it to, who knows. But, but, uh, one, and I think two, uh, you know, to put the people around the table to say, forget about the politics and all of this. Look at this space and have that as input. I totally agree that politically, even if we work through that, it's going to be a, a tough row to hoe. Um, but it would also be interesting just to, just to have people say, listen, this is the plan. What would you like to see there?
Right.
Right.
Perhaps, can I make a suggestion? Can we, uh, split up as members of the board and maybe embed ourselves in each one of the breakout groups? One guy, one, so that we can kind of keep it on track?
Agreed.
And Emily, how many people are you bringing along?
Um, probably two, so it'll be three CMR PC people.
Good. As long as Carrie comes.
Carrie better come.
I can't wait.
Um, the other thing, just for clarity on the map, um, you guys have somewhere in the bottles of CMR PC, um, the updated open space conservation land map. Um, just because there definitely is new stuff and visually the town looks a bit different.
Yeah, I'll make sure that gets incorporated in.
Okay.
All right, excellent. Um, I think that's all that I had. I was just curious, um, if there will be another meeting before the forum, um, or if I should just send these final materials out to everyone?
We don't have a meeting scheduled.
All right, um, I can just email this out to everyone then.
Excellent. Is there anything else you need from us, Emily?
Not that I can think of at the moment. I would just say, once I send the, um, the PDF and the image of the flyer um, to you all, just to like use your magic and, and promote it in your networks, um, as much as possible, because we really want to get the word out about that. Um, so that's um, the major thing that I ask.
Okay. Alrighty.
Excellent.
All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Carrie, do you want me to stick on for your, your portion?
You don't have to.
All right, okay.
Thank you, though.
All right.
Hi, Emily.
Bye.
As you recall, we, we agreed to spend some additional money on the Center Village study and Carrie's all excited and ready to roll. So she wants to brainstorm a little about that.
Um, I don't know if I've had a chance to meet all of you, so I'm Carrie Salam, an economic development planner at CMR PC. Um, thank you for having me here tonight. And I, I am planning on jumping on the, um, Housing Production Workshop with Emily, so I'll see you all in real life on, uh, October 11th. Uh, so like Tim said, we, uh, been working on the village strategic plan from 2020 to October of. Uh so like Tim said, we've been working on the village strategic plan from twenty twenty to October of twenty twenty one. Um and during, obviously, it was during COVID, and there's a portion of our center study that prohibited us from getting the input that we really like to include in our planning process. Um so we have, we've kicked off the phase two. And uh what I'm hoping to do, I just wanted to kind of run through my game plan with you all to make sure we're all on the same page. Um I'm hoping to do some community engagement, working uh with the planning board. Um present, I'd like to present the study to the Board of Selectmen, because I haven't even had a chance to do that yet. I'd like to um have some conversations with the business owners in the district and also the property owners, some of the the church leaders, some folks from in the library, that some folks at nineteen Carter. Um I'd like to incorporate some youth input if possible, potentially meet with the um the EDC. Do some stakeholder meetings um to really talk about you know, the future of Earl and Center and and what people would really like to see there. Um my plan is to compile and analyze all the community input that we we gather. Build off of phase one, include the community input portion and put together a draft memo, which would be considered like the phase two. It would be an addendum or an attachment to the Village Center Study. It would be in the same form as the story map, just like the first one. Um you know, there's lots of things to discuss as far as what you know, as far as the center looks like, we have the corridor study on Route sixty two that we're currently working on. There's the discussion of the rail trail expansion. There's other, the Westboro, Northboro, Shrewsbury Trail. You know what? I'm really curious what the community real would like to see. Obviously, the topic of housing will come up. Um some parking, some traffic flow. There's a lot of things that came up in our phase one that I'd really like to just dig a little deeper on for phase two. So, like I said, I'm starting here with the planning board and hoping to gather a lot of input on the eleventh. So I just wanted to kind of give an overview and see if there's any input or anything that uh that I may have missed or any community engagement opportunities that you might think you might know of.
What's your sense of the time schedule? I mean, if you were doing a business and landowner small forum. And then you'd and you present to the select board, you deal with EDC and planning board. Are those independent from one another to some degree?
I would think so. I'm I feel like it's it's better to get you know, input when you have smaller groups.
Right.
Um I'm happy to host public forums, public meetings as well. Um and I I would like to get um you know, some of these meetings on the agenda. I wanted to meet with planning board first, but I would like to get these on the calendar, like during the fall.
Well, this is uh this is Tom Andrew. I am a member at First Parish Church and their church council meets uh once a month, it might be wise um for you to get on the agenda to talk to them about it.
I would love that.
And then they might decide they wanted um a presentation for the wider parish, but that would be a good place to start. I can get you contact for that.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Uh do they do those remote, Tom, or or in person?
Um they do those in person now. Uh I think they may do them hybrid sometimes if somebody's away, but uh they're basically in person at um you know, on the ground floor of uh the meeting house.
That would be ideal, actually. Thank you.
You know, we know the business owners except for the the National Lumber's new owner.
I was just thinking about that.
And and that's such a key integral part. I I that's my sense.
I think they're out of Texas.
Let me see if Google can help us out here.
Pacific Properties or something. Oh, no, is that? No, that's the mall. The mall's Pacific Property. Tom and I were talking, Tom, Andrew and I were talking about that earlier today, trying to I mean, I wonder if there's a regional rep now that since they bought National Lumber, do they do they have somebody that's overseeing that whole cluster, you know, that we might be able to reach out to?
Uh yeah, and they're as we discussed, they're kind of a mystery right now.
Yeah.
I was able to make some way with National Lumber um during the first portion of the study, but it's pretty new at this point.
So the name of the company that bought them is Builders First Source Inc. I'll keep looking, keep digging, see if I can find anything else out, but that's Oh, they're out of Dallas. So there's an investor contact name and phone number. Anybody want that?
Yes, please.
Uh the man's name is Michael. Last name is N E E S E. And he's the SVP and of Investor Relations, and the phone number is two one four seven six five three eight zero four. And he might at least be able to get you to I mean.
Direction.
Yeah.
It's probably a manager down in uh Mansfield. I went to their home base a few weeks ago. It's like a city. It's probably a hundred fork trucks buzzing around like crazy. It's amazing.
It's out of Mansfield?
Yeah.
Well, the this company is out of Dallas.
Yeah, but the original.
It's the holding group.
Right, the original lumber was is it's it still is in Mansfield.
Huh, I always thought Newton was their first location.
Could be.
Mansfield was probably their biggest location, though. Cause the Newton one was one of these older buildings, like tucked in right off of Route nine. It was a giant pain in the neck to get to and um one of those places that kind of grew to the maximum of the lot.
They have a big plate they had. I don't know if they still do down in Fall River, too. That's where they had their trust plant.
Alright, I can start stalking these people. So are there any groups out of the groups that I mentioned that are anybody outside of those groups that you think it would be worth contacting?
Have you? And I'm sorry, I'm I'm new to the board and new to this project. Did you talk to nineteen Carter and Abby Dewick?
Yes, she was on our original. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I I figured, yes, but.
Yeah, no, no. So as this unfolds, I'll keep the planning board um kind of in just updated on what I have set up for meetings, if that works, and that way, like I said, we're all on the same page.
Perfect, thank you.
Do I do that through Tim? Is that the best way to do it?
Yeah, that's probably the best. If you don't mind, Tim.
No, that's fine. Sounds good.
We'll try to dig up some stakeholders.
Awesome, thanks, Jay. And that is Peter still on the EDC?
Yes.
Alright, um so that's all I have this evening, unless there's anything, any other questions that you have, or you want to discuss anything further?
So would you, you mean, beginning to end, what do we, you think this is three months? This is, you know, how long? What's your sense?
I I'm three months would be ideal for me. I'm thinking I'd like by the end of December, if you think I can have these conversations. I don't want to rush it.
I mean, i- it might be the 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 goal would be to finish the package in January, because then you the holidays get in the way of trying to finish stuff up in December, I suppose, particularly if you I mean, we're we're in Oc, I mean, it's October, November, bang, bang, and it's gonna, I mean, to me, I think you can do stakeholder meetings, business meetings, EDC, planning board, select board, uh general forum. I think you can get all that done, and then then maybe finalize everything in January, so we have a you have a final meeting with us at that point or something for a presentation, maybe. Does that make sense?
Yes, that does actually. That works perfect. Say end of January?
Yeah, or even the middle, I mean. That'd be great.
If anything else comes up, I think um you should have my email. And send it to me or any, like I said, if anything comes pops into your mind after we get off this call.
Everybody has the the earlier materials, except Tom is probably right.
Yeah, I was gonna actually put it in the chat, but I think the way it's set up, there's no chat.
Right, because this is not a Zoom meeting, this is a Zoom webinar.
Webinar, yeah.
Yeah.
I will.
So we've we've got, everybody's got that, right?
Yeah, if somebody would forward it to me, that's that's fine. I'd I'd love to look at it.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Send it to me also. I, oh, actually, no, I do have it. That was fairly like just a couple of months ago that that went out, right?
Yeah, I just resent it to you, Tim.
Village Strategic Plan. Okay, I'll send it to everybody from what you send to me. Good. And and because this that storyboard approach, is that what we call it?
Story map, yep.
Story map, excuse me. I like that.
It's nice because it's all linked together in the same, in one document.
You got both in there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, I will send it over to everybody right now.
I can also share my screen and go through it, but I think you have other items on your gen.
Thomas, remind me how your email starts, will you? Tom, Andrew.
I believe it's a, I believe it's um Mel M.
Is that what it is?
Yep.
M.
Isn't that what it?
Oh, of course.
You'll have to tell us the story about that sometime, Thomas. I was reading about it.
It's so funny, that is uh well, Meliora is the um motto for the University of Rochester. Means ever better or ever higher. Which is how I remember.
Okay, I think I get urban. Good, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you, too, and to see the rest of you. Um I'll sign off.
Alright, thank you. Good night.
Alright, thank you. See you all soon. Bye, Tim.
Bye bye.
Alright, well, our agenda is sort of long to crap now, but at this point, can I take a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting we had on September thirteenth?
I'll second.
Nobody found the mistake?
Well, which one?
The section on the Nuria project was titled uh Housing Survey. I just noticed about five minutes ago.
Oh, really?
Fixed it, it's okay. We're voting on the amended minutes.
That's the one I meant to second.
Ah.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to accept the amended minutes of September thirteenth meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing not, I'll ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
They teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
You did.
I know he's muted.
Aye.
Thank you, and Tom Sanford, I motion carries the analyst. Thank you. Uh the last item that we have on the agenda is for your presentation, Jay, on the fee structure.
Actually, I was asked what her fees were. I didn't know. I know you guys, those are some calculation which I've never figured out, terminate. And then Tim said they were in the back of the bylaw, but there there's only one fee listed, unless I missed it, there's only one listed there.
They're in the back of the subdivision control law.
Is a list of fees or as part of, because the application, see whatever it's called.
You know, I don't think that got included in the online version, but if you have a hard copy.
Alright, I looked at that, too.
Of the subdivision control law in the back.
Alan?
Yeah.
Agent there that talks about fees?
Mine has a hard cover that's pink and and on the back page of the pink, so I bet you.
You mean, I paid thirty five dollars and I didn't get the cover? I didn't get a receipt either.
Yeah, they look for people like you every day.
Maybe I downloaded this, and that's why I don't have it. How many different fees are there? For all the stuff that we talk, we deal with, you're gonna have um ARs at fees. Gonna have prelim subdivisions. Uh definitive subdivisions.
Late fees.
Do we charge?
Service fee.
What?
Expedited service fee.
Expedited service fees.
Exp- expedited?
It's pink. You're gonna send it to me, so.
Application for endorsement on plan, believe preliminary subdivision plan, definitive subdivision plan, plus twenty-five. I'll, I'll, I'll copy this and send you it.
Just out of curiosity, how much are those three things?
So the application for endorsement on a plan, believe not to acquire approval is fifty for the first lot and twenty for each additional lot, and then, we used to be able to get the assessor's fee, but we don't charge that anymore, and then, preliminary subdivision plan, is a fifty-dollar filing fee, plus a hundred for each lot. And then the definitive subdivision plan was fifty for filing fee. Plus, if the preliminary plan was filed, it was a thousand, if there was no preliminary plan, it was fifteen hundred. Plus one hundred per lot. And then we had some, and the planning board held a public hearing on April twenty-fourth, two thousand nine, voted this fee schedule five in favor, zero against.
Well, the cost.
There's also on this page, the information asking for a digital file. The applicant shall submit a CD-ROM or DVD, DVD or media specified by the planning board, a standard digital file and all other requirements, including, documentation as referenced, so we need to update that, like you were saying too, right? So I'll copy this, Jay, and send you.
You just tell me what it is, so I got it, but.
Yeah, but I mean.
I would like to see it.
Oh, yeah.
It was two thousand nine.
It's time for us to do it again.
And the cost of living's gonna, well, it's gone up, what, four hundred percent in the last six months? Plus, I feel like we really should be charging a, fuel surcharge, I'm not, I'm sure I justify it, but just, thing to do now.
Yeah, right, when we're not on Zoom anymore, that won't be as much of an issue.
We could charge a Zoom fee.
Ooh, there you go. Convenience fee of staying in your house.
Does it, when you did it in two thousand nine, did you find, did you like, see what other town's were charging, or how, how do you come up with numbers for these things anyways?
It's what we charged for years and years and years.
We, we just updated it, yeah, so we, i- if it was five hundred dollars, we made it a thousand, if it was a thousand, we made it fifteen hundred, so.
But I mean, lot fees, those have been the same for my life, I think.
Maybe we shouldn't.
What other, other towns charge, you're right, I mean, it'd be interesting.
Who knows what they charge, yeah.
Well, let me look. There's three job openings at the, Berlin, National Lumber. There's three, there's three in Mansfield and two in Kingston. Those are the only jobs.
For ever, all left, it seems.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
We also make them, when they charge, when we're doing subdivisions, we make them put up a fee for consulting work.
Is that in the document?
It's in the documentation, that it's our right to do the compare review. We don't put a fee on it. We just say it's our right, and then we tell them we want twenty-five hundred dollars or three thousand dollars or whatever.
But that's, that's a reimbursement of expenses, and they give a deposit, and if we don't spend it, we give it back.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. I remember when we did that.
Yeah, we still do.
That's for the definitive?
We do it on both. That's when we hire Scott.
If, if I may, I actually had scheduled a nine o'clock call with our Tokyo office, because, Tom Sanford sent in passing last, only because Tom Sanford said passing, we were gonna have a, a short agenda, and then when Tim and I were sitting down, at his place, you know, it, there wasn't a long agenda, so, but I do have one administrative question. I now have the, the, the plan all signed and dated. We should have two blueprint copies of that for us to sign, so we have the local record.
Correct.
And Jay, I, I at least came away with the impression that you had not received in the mail two, two other copies of that, was I right about that?
Hmm, I think I did, I might have cut them up to scan them.
So, so where, where's the MyLok, because I can take it and plot out two copies at work.
I, I have the MyLok right at my house.
That'd be better, because it's all signed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have a scanner, or?
What time? What, what time tomorrow? Do you want to come by?
Uh, it'll have to be in the afternoon.
That's fine.
I have to be in Cambridge at seven.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so we can do that, then that, if you're doing that, then my other question was, I don't believe I knew, I, I actually had the knowledge as to whom I should let them know that it's signed and ready to pick up, but, if somebody wants.
I know who that is, I've been communicating with him, it's Alex.
Okay, okay. Alright, so I think what I'm hearing is that, that Tom will copy it and then drop it off at the town meeting, and then, we'll touch base with Jay and let him know it's there, is that fair enough?
Correct.
Okay. Alright then, I'm, again, I'm sorry, I will not do this another night, but I, I was getting pressure, and I did think, on the basis of the, the best information I had, that we'd be done by nine, so.
Well, it said right in the agenda that we were gonna be done by nine, didn't it?
You won't, we will be done by nine, watch us.
Yeah, I, I think I'd rather have like four minutes before your phone calls, but, so apologies, guys.
No problem.
Bye bye, thanks.
Goodnight.
Night.
Take care, Tom. You, you ready?
Ready for what?
Form A, approval not required, two hundred and fifty dollars plus fifty dollars a lot. Definitive plan, thousand plus a hundred per lot. Definitive plan, if no preliminary plan, three thousand plus two hundred and fifty a lot. Common driveways, a thousand plus a hundred per lot. Common driveway refile with revisions to plan per lot serviced by driveway two hundred and fifty. Woo, this is North Pro, scenic site plan approval, five hundred plus five cents per square foot. Planned residential development, a thousand, open space residential development, land clearing and grading, two cents per square foot. Wow, anyway. That's North Bro, I, it sounds like we need to have a good discussion, I can look up some others and.
Seems like we.
Irrelevant.
Say it again?
If you felt like making a little table of few comparables.
Yeah.
I'd get, you know, Boston, Cambridge.
Well, I mean, if we looked at North Pro, Bolton, Boylston, you know, the three smaller towns around us. Hudson, Clinton, and Marlboro seem to have a, I mean, they're a little different.
Okay, I'll leave that on the agenda for next time.
Perfect.
For a time after next.
A time after, because next time we're gonna be tied up.
Yeah, so we don't have a common driveway one, right?
No.
No. We should.
Yeah.
Speed bump surcharge.
It should be giant.
Cool. Is there anything else?
I'm good.
Well, we hope you have a good trip.
Thank you very much, it's gonna be warm.
Where you going? Puerto Rico?
Dallas for convention. So, it won't be warm in the convention hall. It'll be freezing. Almost surely.
Newly let, let's this weekend, my daughter and Sean are heading off to, guess where?
Florida.
Worse, Puerto Rico.
Puerto Rico.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
Their own like generator and bottled water.
Yeah.
Right, do you know where in Puerto Rico?
I don't know, I think Sean said there's different parts of the island are in different conditions, and then where they're going is better. Tell, because sometimes you get the reports with the worst rather than the average.
Right, well, the west side of the island is where they really got hit this time. Where Maria came in from the east, hit Puerto Rico smack on and just went all the way across the island. This one just came up and grazed the outside edge. So, the east side of the island is in decent shape.
I know.
Yep, I heard yesterday that half of the island has power.
Yeah, that's what I was reading too.
Yeah.
Some big diesel storage delivery ship that they won't let land, because it's not an American vessel or something. Generators.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's a big thing, that hap-, that was the case for Maria too. Any vessel that goes to Puerto Rico has to first stop like somewhere in Florida. And get like checked in.
But you know, there's also, if, if you're shipping, fuel, I, is this, if you're shipping fuel from one port in the United States to another port in the United States, it's gotta be on a registered US ship.
Right.
There aren't any.
And that's a real bummer, it's a bummer when you're in Ireland.
And, and so they were trying to figure out if they could work some temporary, this is something that got passed in the twenties or something, you know?
Yep.
So, to transport internally coastal, you get all these bottlenecks, and so these foreign registered ships can't come in, and so they were, they, the, the NPR was saying, you know, there's really some concern, they were trying to figure out how to, make a modification that might be seen as temporary, so the, the power, you know, the, the people affected, the unions and stuff that might be affected by the modification, and the shipping industry would, would buy into it for a temporary basis to ease the shortage that might exist for this winter, you know, so.
Yeah, I think they did ease it temporarily after Maria, but, after some real arm twisting of our favorite prior president. It, it just, it hamstrings them, something terrible.
Bolton, eh, approval not required, eighty-five, and for the application fee and a hundred and ten for each lot, preliminary subdivision twenty-one fifty, definitive subdivision forty-three hundred.
Wow.
And a common driveway is twenty-seven hundred for the application fee and a hundred and sixty-five for each lot served.
I like that.
Backland lot, five forty. Ay, ay, ay.
What would we do with all that money?
What did they do with all that money?
It goes to free cash.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't get to keep it.
That, their taxes are really high compared to our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, whoo. Up, I'll, uh, not interesting.
We either raise our rates, or we could advertise, we could get Peter Hoffman, to do an advertising campaign based on it's less expensive to build in early.
No, oh my gosh, no. We need to make it more expensive than Bolton.
Plus, I think we should have a hometown discount, like if you're a resident, you get a break on all the fees.
We've done that before, we've waived fees for people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I could go along with that.
We have discretion there.
I listened to the coffee talk, and there was, a question as to whether there would be a special town meeting.
Yes, I, I asked that question.
That's right.
Because that was where we're all gonna sign the MyLok.
I was hoping you'd remember.
Yeah.
And they said, they didn't feel like there was anything, significant on anybody's list at this point, I mean, you asked particularly about CPA, but,
Right.
like you said, CPA for one, I mean, one product is, uh.
Right, but they did say that they would keep it in mind, and if there seemed to be a bunch of small things, they would think about it.
Yeah, so, I didn't know if, we, we haven't talked about pushing for, a town meeting. Because I don't think we're gonna have anything really, did we feel we'd have anything ready for, like November or December?
Not substituted.
Yeah. Boylston is a hundred for, A and R. Oh, a hundred for plans showing a lot line change, or one hundred plus seventy-five for each new lot shown on a plan. Preliminary subdivision, two hundred plus a hundred for each building, and a definitive five hundred plus two hundred. We're not gonna use them as an example, I don't think.
Less than we are.
Wow, and that, and that's the only, the only fees they have listed as part of the, planning board's schedule, so. Is Jay in charge of the website for the planning board?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay, good.
Well, it depends, there's two, which, I'm, I'm doing the one where the meetings are posted in the minutes and the, uh.
That's my town government.
Government.
I don't know, I don't know anything to do with the other one.
Well, because Kristen last night, they, they talked about that, and she was saying she'd eager to see, more effort on the website, the, the, the pages for different committees and stuff.
Right, that came up after coffee talk, and I, mentioned, you know, I guess Peg kind of went through everybody's page to see who needs updates and who is good. And I told her that if I received access for the planning board one, I would be happy to be that person.
Alright.
Uh, and she said that she would do that. So.
Thanks.
You're welcome, and CPA also, you know, because it's really not.
Marines.
Complicated.
Marines probably gonna do CPA, but,
Right, right, right.
If you see stuff that needs fixing, she did some stuff yesterday, because,
Okay.
we got onto the site without my information, so.
Yeah, so if we can get access to the planning board, one, I'd be happy to take care of that.
Cool, thank you.
Long as I don't have to do it. I haven't figured out how to share my screen yet.
Now, when we look at our fees, you have to add the fact that you have to spend thirty-five dollars to buy the book in order to find out what the fees are.
Not anymore, well, if you put them online, then you won't have to.
I'm gonna wait for the update, the updated ones online. But actually, the other confusion is, the bylaws are, can be downloaded from one website, but all the meetings, all the meeting, but information says on. The bylaws are, can be downloaded from one website, but all the meetings, all the meeting but information is on the other website.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make a whole lot of sense either. Think we need a new website, and with both, it's more secure. I think one of these days, the one that we're keeping everything on is gonna just disappear. Thanks to some hackers, and we have no records.
What about, isn't everything on your computer?
None of our stuff is, yeah.
Yeah, we're all set then.
You're fine.
I must, yeah, I suppose.
And I believe, like, all the town Gmail's get backed up. Somewhere else, yeah.
And when the town gets hacked, Jay, then you can pile on and say that you want to ransom the data that you have on your computer.
Yeah, that's right.
There's good fee. And you want it in Bitcoin.
Yep.
Alright, so Carolyn, when you get back, you're gonna get in touch with me about a rendezvous with the town, town hall, okay?
I am, yep.
And how long you gone for?
Till Monday.
Have a great.
Back late, late Monday, yeah, thank you.
You want a motion, Thomas?
We, after we adjourn, we need to have a revisit of the.
Correct.
Part of date.
Correct.
So. We adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn and stop recording. Does anybody have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote, Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, I, thank you.